Good evening. Welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, November 14, 2022. I call the meeting to order. Ask Commissioner Toler to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner Toler. Anna, if we could have roll call, please.
Chair Deckerl.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Toler.
Here.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Please note Commissioner Russell is present via Zoom. Zoom. Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
Commissioner Erith.
Present.
Okay, and Commissioner, as a reminder, with Commissioner Russell attending remotely, will be taking voice votes tonight. All right, that brings us to announcements and presentations. We have none, so we'll move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the community can address the planning commission on matters that are not on tonight's agenda but are within our jurisdiction. Each member of the public who wishes to speak during public comment will have three minutes. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak tonight for public comment? Again, that's on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Okay, seeing none, anyone in the virtual world?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll move to Commissioner comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Russell. Do you have anything this evening?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. I know we have students here to observe. Shout out to Sarah Sarita Plata from Early College High School, who I am serving as a mentor for her senior project. She is learning about urban planning. We also have, I believe, students here from UCI, so welcome to you. And I hope that everyone here, students and community members, can really participate in this meeting and take part in the public process. So, thank you all for being here, and happy almost Thanksgiving to you all. That's it from you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Erith.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to echo Commissioner Vivar's comment and welcome the students from UCI and Early College High School to be here with us tonight. It's very exciting that you have an interest in urban planning, urban and regional planning, and you're more than welcome to come here anytime you want and observe this process. It can get really exciting, I promise. I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Rojas, who was picked as our Veteran of the Year. So, congratulations, Commissioner. It's a pleasure to serve with you, and I appreciate your service to this country. So, thank you very much. And that's all from me, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Erith. Commissioner Rojas.
Well, I'd like to echo again, welcome to the students here. I also like to thank the City of Costa Mesa for the honor. Great, great events, and it's really great to be part of this community and do our service, you know, whether in uniform or as commissioners to support our community. So, thank you guys all.
Okay, Commissioner Toler.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Chair. Also, welcome the students and members of the public to the audience. And I would like to echo Commissioner Erith's acknowledgement of our own Planning Commissioner, Mr. Rojas, for having been recognized by the mayor as the 2022 Veteran of the Year. And that's just not because he was a veteran, which would be an accomplishment and an honor enough in and of itself, but for the work that he continues to do, even to this day, in honor and service of veterans. And so, well-deserved honor. And then, I think there's some recognition needed for Commissioner Vivar. For anyone who happened to have missed the November 1 city council meeting, you would have been treated to a singing rendition of the National Anthem by our own Planning Commissioner Vivar, and he was quite good. And so, anyway, those are my two comments for tonight. Hope you enjoy the meeting.
Very good. I'll welcome the students as well. In fact, my fellow anteaters, I attended a few months before you did. But it's good to see you all here and all the students who are learning about city government, urban planning, very important subject, and it's nice to see that the farm system is working. So, Commissioner Rojas, congratulations on your honor. Thank you for your service, sir. Appreciate it. And that will do for Commissioner comments. We'll move to consent calendar. We don't have any items tonight, and so that takes us to public hearings. And we have one public hearing item tonight. Anna, would you read public hearing item number one into the record?
Public hearing item number one, Planning Application 22-20 and Tentative Parcel Map 2022-140 for a four-unit residential small lot subdivision development at 549 Bernard Street. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioner Russell, do you have any ex parte communications to report?
No, I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Erith.
None, sir.
Commissioner Vivar.
No, sir.
Commissioner Rojas.
None, sir.
Commissioner Russell.
Okay.
No.
Vice Chair.
None.
And I have none, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Jaeger for the staff report tonight.
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commission. I'm Chris Jaeger, Associate Planner here with the City of Costa Mesa. Tonight, I'll be presenting the Small Lot Ordinance Project at 549 Bernard Street. This project was continued from the October 10 Planning Commission Agenda, because before that meeting, it was noticed by staff that there were some errors on the Tentative Parcel Map. The Parcel Map has since been modified and reviewed for compliance with the code by staff. So, Small Lot Ordinance, this is a little different than a regular residential project in that this is meant to promote a wider range of home ownership opportunities on individual lots within multifamily residential zones. The underlying density would be the same as the underlying zone, so you're not going to result in any more units than you would otherwise, but the Small Lot Ordinance does allow for some additional flexibilities and development standards. To approve a Small Lot Ordinance Project, required findings will need to be made for the Tentative Parcel Map and design review. So, just some background on the project. The site is approximately 12,000 square feet, and it's located on the south side of Bernard Street between Maple Avenue and Charlie Street. The site is immediately adjacent to an unnamed public alley on the west side of the property. One other residential property has vehicular access to that alley, to their garage, and the multifamily development has pedestrian access and a trash enclosure accessing the alley. The surrounding neighborhood, it is an established residential neighborhood. It contains a mixture of multifamily and single-family residents, and the subject property, it is located basically in downtown Costa Mesa, within walking distance of the 35, 43, and 55 OCTA bus routes. It's also within half-mile walking distance to various retail commercial districts, including the Triangle and the Courtyards, and within distant, or walking distance of Lyons Park, the Costa Mesa Library, and the Downtown Recreation Center. The property zone R2HD, or Multifamily Residential District High Density, has a general plan land use designation of high-density residential, and the properties to the east and west of the subject site are also zoned R2HD. And the multifamily development across the alley is zoned Multifamily Residential District, or R3. The property to the south is zoned R2HD, and it's currently developed with a mobile home park. Properties to the north, across Bernard, are zoned R2HD and are developed with a mixture of single-family and multifamily developments. So, for the existing conditions, there are two rental units onsite and a detached two-car garage. The top-left image you see there kind of shows the property and alley. The middle image on the top shows a front-facing view to the existing front unit from the sidewalk. The right image shows the alley from the sidewalk looking towards the back of the property. Bottom-left is the undeveloped portion of the lot in the rear, and the middle bottom is the second unit on the property with that detached two-car garage. The bottom-right image shows the residences across the alleyway and the only other garage access to the alley. Surrounding neighborhood, as I mentioned, it's fairly eclectic with residential, single-family, and multifamily. The top-left image shows the Huskroft House, which is one of the city's historically registered houses. It's directly across from the subject site. The middle image shows the multifamily development to the left of the project site, and then the upper-right image shows the duplex to the right of the project site. Both of those are on Bernard. The multifamily development across the alley is shown on the bottom-left, and this is actually from Maple Avenue, so this shows the front of that development. And then, the other two images are showing some other residential developments on Bernard Street. So, the project tonight is a request for approval of a design review and tentative parcel map, and this would facilitate the residential small lot subdivision to create four parcels and for the construction of a new detached residential unit on each parcel. The project proposes to demolish the existing two rental units and two-car garage, and in addition, the project proposes various site improvements, including hardscaping, landscaping, and various walls and fences. The tentative parcel map proposes to subdivide the existing 12,003-square-foot parcel into four parcels of approximately 3,000 square feet, and that does comply with the maximum density of one unit per 3,000 square feet of lot area. The tentative parcel map also includes a 2-foot-6-inch alley dedication to the city at the west side of the property along the existing alley, and there would also be a sidewalk over the four parcels. With the development, the alley would remain accessible to all of the neighbors with current access to the alley and the general public as a whole. And in reviewing the parcel map, staff has consulted the Municipal Code and the Subdivision Map Act and determined that the parcel map is in compliance with the respective regulations. The proposed site plan includes four detached units. Each unit includes a two-car garage and open parking immediately adjacent to the garages. The project is providing the minimum number of parking spaces as required by the code, so eight garage spaces and seven open parking spaces. All parking spaces are accessed via the public alley to the west of the project site. Unit A at the front of the project site includes a front entry, which is oriented towards Bernard Street. Excuse me. The three other units have pedestrian access oriented towards the alley. Each unit includes private open space areas ranging from 249 square feet to 328 square feet, and Unit A's open space is proposed to be in the front of the project site adjacent to Bernard Street. The project proposes three separate floor plans. Unit A is the smallest of the three and features 1,780 square feet with two bedrooms, two full baths, and two half bathrooms. Units B and C consist of 1,984 square feet with four bedrooms, three full bathrooms, and one half bathroom. Unit D is proposed at 1,817 square feet, also featuring four bedrooms, three full bathrooms, and one half bath. Each unit is proposed to have a large open living area on the bottom floor consisting of living and dining and a kitchen. The upper floors are dedicated to bedrooms, bathrooms, and the Unit A features a den as well. The project proposes modern farmhouse design features, which is compatible with the immediately surrounding neighborhood, because the neighborhood features such a diverse collection of architectural styles. The proposed design meets the intent of the city's residential design guidelines, including the second-story design and building mass. Each unit has been designed with articulations and offsets on the various elevations. The front elevation for Unit A, which faces Bernard Street, includes a second-story balcony, eve overhangs, and additional architectural features above the entry porch. The west elevation for all units facing the alley include multiple building planes, a partial second-story overhang above the proposed garages, and varied roof forms. The south elevation includes varied facades and articulations, and the east elevations of all units feature downsloping roofs towards the neighboring properties. All units feature a variety of projections and articulations on each wall plane, including roof types and materials. The proposed building materials include stucco and horizontal hardy plank siding, and in addition, windows are proposed to be recessed into the wall, which would provide an additional sense of depth and articulation. Finally, the proposed maximum height of all units is 23 feet 6 inches, which is less than the maximum allowed by code of 27 feet. In designing the project, consideration for privacy was given to the surrounding neighbors by locating the windows without direct line of sight into the neighboring property. The site diagram that you see on the screen here demonstrates that the windows are located to eliminate these direct views, and in addition, six-foot block walls are proposed to be constructed on the property lines with the neighboring properties, which would further eliminate privacy impacts for the existing neighboring properties. Second-story windows facing east and south are located without direct views into the neighboring properties because those neighboring properties are single-story units. The second-story windows facing west are approximately 37 feet from the existing neighboring windows across the alley, so there should not be any privacy impacts. And finally, there are no proposed second-story windows that pose privacy impacts between all of the proposed units. The code requires that all landscape areas consist of drought-tolerant plant material, and that they should meet the number of plant types based on the total landscaping square footage. The proposed planting materials exceeds the code minimum, and a final landscape plan will be reviewed with the building permit plan check, and that plan will need to comply with the Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. In addition, as required by code, all parking, access, and walkways will need to be illuminated. Again, this will be reviewed as part of the building permits immitile, and the project proposes block walls to be constructed on all exterior property lines and between the individual units as well. Finally, the code requires that utilities be undergrounded and that meters all be screened, so this will be reviewed as part of the building permits immitile as well. In addition to the standard conditions of approval proposed for the project, the project includes notable conditions related to window placement to maintain privacy of neighbors, to ensure that that six-foot block wall is constructed around the development and between the units, to ensure backflow preventers are located outside of the street setback and screened, and this would also apply to other above-ground utilities that are approved, that the final landscape plan be compliant with Welo or the Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, driveways and parkways be finished with decorative stamped concrete or pervious papers, and that CC and RS be established. These would require vehicle parking in the garages, and that storage could not interfere with the garage parking. It would also establish the prohibition of outside storage of boats, trailers, RVs, or other similar vehicles, and it would provide a plan for maintenance of open spaces and common areas and sidewalks. The final conditions would require onsite lining required in parking access and walkways, and that a comprehensive utility plan be submitted with the building permits immitile. In order to approve the project, the planning commission must make the required findings for the tentative parcel maps and design review. Staff has included proposed findings in the report, but in short, the project is compatible with the zoning code and general plan. The site's physically suitable to accommodate the subdivision. The design of the subdivision provides for the opportunities of future natural heating and cooling. The subdivision does not interfere with the utilities of public access, and the site is already serviced by all utilities. In terms of the design review findings, the project complies with the Municipal Code and meets the intent of the residential design guidelines, and the construction of two-story homes avoids unreleaved two-story walls and is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of building heights. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from provisions of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15315 and Section 15332, and staff recommends that planning commission approves the planning application and tentative parcel map, subject to the conditions of approval. With that, I can make myself available to any questions, if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jaeger, for your presentation and for the staff report. Commissioner Russell, do you have any questions of staff?
Not at this time, thank you. Very good report.
Okay, Commissioner Erith.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger, for the presentation. It was a good one. If I can direct your attention to the bottom of page five in the Agenda Report under the Parking and Circulation subheading, the bottom of that statement says that a total of seven open parking spaces are provided throughout the proposed subdivision located adjacent to each unit, which complies with the Municipal Code minimum requirement. It's been a little while since I've reviewed AB 2097, but I thought that there were some recent changes from the state of California that would do away with the minimum parking requirements if a new development was within a certain proximity to transit. Yeah, so the state did enact regulations in regards to parking. I don't know if the city has taken any consideration of those for future projects, but that does go into play on January 1 of this year. Okay. All right. I just didn't know if that would apply here or not, or if we are still enforcing the minimums, assuming that it does apply to 2097, or if that's something the developer might want to ergo, given the opportunity. Anyway, I'll move on. If I can just turn a couple pages here. Appreciate your patience. If we can turn to the conditions of approval, and it would be typed page 24, number nine, condition nine, it says, "Prior to the issuance of building permits, the developer shall pay a park impact fee or dedicate parkland to meet the demands of the proposed development." If you could just, for public knowledge, just share some of that information with us, Mr. Jaeger.
Sure. So, the parkland impact fee, it is intended to apply for all residential units built in the city, and these fees do go towards the development and improvement of parks within the city. So, each individual unit would be subject to the parkland impact fee.
Okay, thank you. And if we turn the page to page 27, under Transportation Number 28, and by extension of the last question for public knowledge, there's also a transportation fee associated with this project as well. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. The Transportation Division assesses fees based on the increased number of daily trips for each project. So, it's far and above my knowledge, but it's basically calculated on how many trips are coming and going.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. I'll turn a couple more pages. If we go to page 30, and I think I just wrote this as a side comment, I was meaning to ask what the city's position is on enforcing any kind of regulation for construction and demolition best practices for new construction in the city. So, people may or may not know this, but we talked about this earlier. The City of Costa Mesa won the Construction and Demolition Award through the California Resource Recovery Association, I think it was a couple months ago, which means that we are one of the leaders of trying to repurpose any kind of construction-related waste out of the waste stream and trying to get those materials back into the system. So, I didn't know where we stand on making best practices available through conditions of approval, because I don't think I saw it here about asking the developer to, say, when they're, you know, demolishing the house, to start different waste streams, for example. So, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Scott, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, the Building Department checks that during the construction review.
Okay.
And they do have minimum requirements, and the contractor has to submit for that. So, it's very highly regulated, though.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Dropkin. Mr. Jaeger, thank you so much. Chair, that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vivar, questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger, as well, for your presentation. Very thorough, as always. I do have a couple questions that I was wondering relating to your presentation. So, one of them, you briefly touched on the need to have postponed this item to today, and I believe it was because of staff's concerns with circulation and parking. Is that correct? Would you mind just briefly going over what staff saw and how that was, you know, improved to get to this presentation?
Sure. So, the delay in the project revolved around the tentative parcel map. There was a little bit of miscommunication between the applicant and city staff here in terms of what should be shown on the parcel map. So, and we worked with them to get that all corrected. So, the parcel map you see today has been reviewed by Public Works and Planning, so it is compliant with the local and state laws.
Okay. There was also something in the staff report regarding this subdivision application project being exempt or not, falling under the, I think it was the Mesa, some kind of a specific plan. Would you mind going over why that was?
I think you're referring to the urban plans.
Yes, that's correct.
So, the urban plans, they're overlay plans throughout the city on the west side, and these urban plans allow for residential development in industrial and residential zones, and the urban plans allow for relaxed regulations and development standards. So, in this case, this project is not an urban plan project, even though the location would be eligible to be an urban plan project. So, for example, those three-story residences you see throughout Costa Mesa with the rooftop decks, all of those were developed under the urban plans.
Okay. And this one doesn't fall into that, since it's a different kind of building? Is that what I'm getting?
It's a different application.
Okay.
The applicant applied under the Small Lot Ordinance and not
I see, I see.
... urban plan.
Got it. So, if I'm understanding the site plan correctly, you will have something like eight parking spaces onsite and a single common driveway for the access. Is that correct?
So, all of the parking spaces are accessed via the public alley.
Okay.
The, each individual unit has two garage parking spaces, and then there's seven open spaces throughout the property as well.
Mm-hmm.
And that is the minimum number of, as required by code. Each Small Lot Ordinance project unit requires a two-car garage, and then depending on the number of bedrooms, that determines the number of open parking spaces.
So, those residents would be able to access their parking spaces directly from the alley?
Correct.
That's great. Okay. One other question I had, I don't know if city staff would have the answer to this, but, so, as I understand from the staff report, this is, you know, and the existing building is, or the existing buildings onsite are two residential units, and one of them is occupied. I'm guessing the other one is vacant. Do we know, you know, what's going to happen to the people that are occupying the? Do we know, you know, what's going to happen to the people that are occupying the occupied unit there, and, you know, are there any relocation plans for them?
So my understanding is that, yes, one of the units is occupied currently by a renter, and they have been informed that their lease would not be extended after it expires, I believe next summer. But we may want to follow up with the applicant.
I see. I will. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jaeger and staff. That's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rojas, any questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Commissioner Toller.
Sure, thank you. The applicant's meeting the parking requirement, which is two per unit covered, and then they pay on number of bedrooms or open spaces required. If, I think the elephant in the room is that's a lot of parking for four units. I don't know. If the applicant wanted to get out of that relief, is there some sort of administrative process that they could have gone through, some sort of adjustment, or?
So the only process to deviate from that section of the code would be to apply for abairance.
I was looking around the neighborhood and saw some three-story projects in the same zone, and I guess that's, my question was going to be, I guess the answer is the urban plan. And then, last question, the small lot ordinance. So I guess they could have submitted under the standards of the small lot ordinance or go the other route and do it under an urban plan, and I guess there's benefit, pros and cons for each route. And they went the small lot ordinance, so just help me understand this real quick. Are those, those aren't fee simple, are they? This isn't, or is this going to be like an HOA?
Yes, so CCNRs will be established with this project, and I believe that would be the same whether it's urban plan or small lot.
The lots are individual lots for each property, if that was your question?
Sort of, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Each property will have its own parcel, and they're about 3,000 square feet, give or take.
Okay, but they won't be able to be sold individually?
They will be able to sold individually.
Yeah, it's not a condo map. It's a fee simple.
Individualized, fee simple map.
And so after, say, this goes through a cycle and it has the same zoning, would they be able to be individually developed per the R2 high-density standards? Or would the HOA, the conditions prevent that?
So under the, the small lot ordinance has the same underlying density as the zone. So they would not be able to add additional units, just because this is, they're maxing out.
They wouldn't be able to add additional, okay. So each resulting lot is about 3,000 square feet, and because that's 20 units per acre, they could replace it with a oneplex on each lot, right?
Theoretically, yes. And then the small lot ordinance, there are additional flexibilities in the development standards, which wouldn't be available if they were to do a residential project that is not a fee simple, I guess.
Right. That's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair.
Thanks, sir. Very good report, Chris. I appreciate it a lot. I happened to be down at a property on 20th Street today. Had some business there. They had no on-site parking. I had to park two blocks away, because the street was so impacted with cars. So I'm very appreciative that this development is properly parked, so that cars are going to be on the property and not out clogging up the street. Couple of questions I have, starting on Page 23, the condition of approval, excuse me, number three, that you referred to earlier about the placement of windows being sensitive for privacy. Does this, is this a condition or consideration for approving ADUs?
So first-story ADUs, the first-story residential projects in general, it's not something that the city looks at. The design guidelines specifically call out second stories. The ADU code does have specific regulations for two-story ADUs, which requires specific window placement. So if it's within 25 feet of the neighboring residence, then there can only be clear-story windows. In addition to that, we do consult the residential design guidelines for ADUs.
But for ground floor, people can do whatever they want with windows?
Correct, yeah. The design guidelines specifically call out that the window placement is for second-story windows.
What would it take to change that?
The design guidelines were adopted by City Council, so it would have to go back to City Council.
Okay. Next question I've got is on Page 24, and this is Condition of Approval Number 12. Says the ground floor exterior, well, you can read it. My question is, what's the rationale or the concern? Why is that condition in there?
The intent is to not increase, say, a three-foot deck, so at that point, that six-foot wall turns into a three-foot wall. So again, it comes back to privacy.
Privacy for the adjacent neighbors. Got it. Okay, thank you.
You good? That's good. So my questions tonight are going to be focused on Unit A out at Bernard Street. And I want to ask first if there was ever any conversation with the applicant about orienting the garage door from the west elevation to the north elevation, so that the access would be off of Bernard and not off the alley. Is there any concepts presented to you in that regard, or was there any discussion between you and the applicant?
In regards to the garage door, no.
Okay. And essentially, that garage is, dimensionally, it's a square. It's six inches shorter on one side than the other, so it's essentially a square. What's the depth, what's our, what's the design standard for garages in terms of depth?
The minimum size for a two-car garage is 20 feet by 20 feet.
Okay, okay, so we're beyond that, okay. Can you tell, give me an idea of if there's any articulation of the second-floor structural plane or the wall plane from the first-floor wall plane? I know you said there's an eve overhang, but is, give me an idea of the depth of that eve that kind of divides the second-story wall plane from the first.
Is this specifically for Unit A?
Yes.
So the, if you're looking at the sheet specifically for Unit A.
Right.
The second floor, it does show roof overhang to the right of the building there. So that is the roof overhang directly above the...
Okay, I'm seeing it.
Let me pull it up here.
So it looks like, I've got it. Yeah, I got it, okay.
So that's the roof overhang directly above the entry door on the first floor. So that provides some articulation. In addition, the varied materials would provide additional articulation. But in terms of the design choices, I would recommend you speak to the applicant.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll do that. I think that's all the questions I have there. So what we'll do now is we'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward to one of the podiums if they have a presentation to make. If not, there will be questions, at least from me, so I would have you come up. But if the applicant's here and has a presentation to make, that would be great. If not, I do have to open the public hearing for public comment as well. So, good evening.
Good evening. Hello, Chair. Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Hi, my name is William Yang.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, guys, for taking the time to review this project. My name is William Yang. I've been living in Costa Mesa for the past five years, and I've been a custom home builder through Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. And, you know, we love the city, and, you know, we want to contribute to making the neighborhood better and, you know, provide homeownership opportunities in Costa Mesa. We've done multiple projects in Costa Mesa, on 18th Street, on west side and east side Costa Mesa, and so we understand the city's expectations, and, you know, we are here to work with the city to make the project go through. So, you know, with that said, you know, we're open to any questions or, you know, try to address any concerns you guys have. Behind me is Steven. He is the project architect, so with any technical questions, he could help answer those as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Russell, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Erath.
I do not, Chair, other than to say thank you for the presentation.
Okay, Commissioner Vavar.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. I do have a question. So are there plans for the relocation of the existing residence of the occupied unit?
Yes, so when we had first negotiated the lease with the tenant, they're well aware that's going to be a one-year, short-term lease. So, you know, we tried to make that clear as much as possible upfront, so that they're aware that this is only going to be a one-year lease to, at the property. And then we do have plans to move forward with construction later of next year. So we're in constant communication with them to see if they have any questions or concerns. And as far as we know, they don't have any problems with moving out next summer.
Okay, so they were aware that they would only have a maximum of a year at the site when they signed the lease with you?
Yes, that's correct. They were aware that we are planning to demolish the buildings and build these four homes.
I see. Is there a particular reason that the design choice was made for different floor plans for the houses as opposed to, I don't know, one plan being multiplied four times?
Steven, you want to?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. This is, my name is Steven Chen. I'm the designer of the project. Yes, every developer wants to do cookie cutter on every project. For the particular one, because of the small lot division, we found it's very difficult to repeat one plan for four times. And we had been designed this over the last 12 months to keep fine-tuning the floor plans, elevations, try to fit to the, each condition of the site. The front unit and the back unit particularly is very unique, because the side yard and the front yard is different. And the middle two, that's why the middle two is the same, because the condition's the same, and we tried to not to make it too many changes on these two plans especially. That's why the, we didn't repeat the middle plan, which is the unit B, to four times. So instead, by doing that, we do a little bit minor changes here and there to accommodate the side condition.
Are there going to be any sort of sustainability-type aspects for your project regarding, for example, water usage, or maybe, I don't know, using some of the runoff for onsite use for gardening or other things as well?
The answer will be yes. Just for the past 10 years or so, the California has been adopting green co to the building, and each year is getting more stringent than the previous year. Same thing here, we do have a lot of regulation on the water usage and electricity consumption, too. For the last year, all the residential, small residential require solar panel already. It's not just solar ready. So the more and more these, the green-friendly residential product will be adopting every year, and for our project, we'll be adapting to the next year project, which is more stringent than this year. So the solar requirement, the water consumption, we've been restricting on that one. So that's, the answer will be yes. This is very, it's getting more greener than what we have so far.
I see. Right, well, thank you, sir. I think that's it from me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your responses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rojas, questions?
I have none, thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
Sure, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I see there's a porch. I'm also interested in, well, the Unit A is the one that's fronting on Bernard.
Sure.
And how that's kind of engaging with and relating to the public realm. And I noticed you have the front door out there, which I thought was nice, and a low fence, and some windows, and a balcony, and a porch, and all that, I think is great, because a lot of projects like that don't do that. They just turn their site on, onto the street. The porch, do you know the depth off the top of your head? I couldn't find that. It looked about to be four feet.
You mean the one on the second floor?
No, the ground floor porch.
The ground floor porch.
Because I understand that that's the main entrance, right?
Right. The porch, there's a two-parted porch. One is a raised six inches. That one is four feet in depth, and the width is about, I would say, 16 to 18 feet. I don't have the exact number here, but that's the porch for separating the hardscape and the landscape in front of it, and that's just the porch gesture for that one.
So the, I mean, the landing that serves the front entrance, that porch.
Exactly.
That's four feet in depth. Is there a reason it's four and not, I don't know, a little, some room for your knees not to touch the railings?
Well, I believe there is also the result of the open space requirement.
Okay, that's what it is.
If you're getting too big, then we're starting deducting the flat service with open requirement for the garden area.
Yeah. And maybe for staff, does the open space requirement isn't satisfied by porch area, I guess?
Let me consult the code, and I'll go back to it.
Sorry, okay, thank you.
That would be interesting for me, too.
Same with balcony. I think what I saw is, you know, three foot seven minus the wall thickness, maybe.
It's about three feet.
Yeah, I know it's cutting into the master bedroom, right? So. The grade difference, it looks like this is pretty much at grade.
Yes.
So is it going to be about sidewalk grade?
No, it's going to be at least six to eight inches higher than the sidewalk, because of the water drainage and everything else, so we don't have the water coming back to the building, so we have to be a couple inches higher. We try to minimize that, so we don't have to compete the building height overall to the neighbors. We do have some neighbor that one story high. That's why we try to minimize the attic space as well, to kind of compress the overall building height as much as possible.
Okay. Regarding parking, there's 15 spots for four units. I'm not making any decisions based on this. This is just for everyone's curiosity's sake. And moving forward with our code, making sure we have a code that makes sense with market realities and what developers want to do and are doing. How many spaces would you provide for those four units if you had the chance, if you had the opportunity?
If the city doesn't have a require.
Right.
Usually, we'll provide two to three parking space for each, between three to four bedrooms, and understanding the Costa Mesa has more higher requirement for the parking, maybe that's the reason coming from Vice Chair's comment that a lot of the neighbor doesn't have enough parking. So instead of me contributing more parking off-street, then I should keep everything in my property to resolve that. Maybe that's the reason behind it, I'm guessing, but that's something definitely in the near future is coming up. The California has tried to reduce the parking requirement as much as they can to relieve the development cost to the developers, so we... so we can provide more affordable housing. And I think that's one of the thing that is a hot topic for every city right now. And so I believe, hopefully, that will come into Costa Mesa too, to reduce the parking for the outdoor parking space. That's one of the hardest challenges that we have to provide two more outdoor uncovered parking at this property since this is small lot division already. Maybe the city can start it from there to reduce the parking on the small lot division requirement for that. Maybe just one more is better than, by doing so, we can provide more landscaping in this instead of just parking space. I think that probably makes more sense providing, that meaning like we need to provide more square footage but these, that will be the opportunity for the outdoor space or the garden area. Or they leave it to the option for the owner, they can do whatever they want on that instead of a parking.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that thorough answer. A related question, density is 20 dwelling units to the acre. If you had that site to build on and you didn't have that constraint, is single-family detached homes just what you build? Or is, would you, would you build, would there be a different product type that would, you'd be interested in building?
But, well, of course, if asking Mr. Yang here, every developer tried to squeeze last juice out of the orange. This is not what we're doing right now. Not saying that we don't do that in the future. But to look at the urban planning aspect for the particular area here, we're seeing more three-story buildings and the higher density right next to it is a commercial. It's just only like half block away. I would say eventually 20 to 30 unit per acre product will come in more and more within maybe 500 or 300 radius from the commercial zone. I think that's a lot of city they are starting from there. The only reason I kind of get involved because I'm, I'm used to be Alhambra Designer Board member too. So we kind of get into that conversation that how are you going to design the city that has the layers to control the commercial, the higher density, medium density to low density. Unfortunately, in California, especially in Orange County and LA County, a single family will become a rare product in the future just because of the shortage of housing. And more and more people really love the weather and the culture in California, I believe. So we constantly having this housing shortage. Single family, since we have that ADU law starting a couple of years ago, it's become like every single family R1 become R2 now just because of the ADU. SB9 is another thing that will really impact to the city's landscape or hardscape zone just because all the R1 zone could be developed to two four units. So that's something we need to look into, how we can regulate that or work with the developer to make that product more residential friendly, not taking, not letting some of the developer taking advantage of squeezing out or putting more unit in there but not care about other things. Open space and the parking is one of the big issue right now. So that's something I think every city should be open to face that requirement and work with it, not just try to, not seeing it and try to push it away or try to stop it because this, you cannot do that. And whether like you're doing so, I think the better way is just to work with it and try to figure out what's the best way to make it work.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Yeager, do we have a?
Yes, Commissioner Toller. The definition for open space private is an area of land located adjacent to an individual dwelling unit owned or leased and maintained by its residents and reserved exclusively for their use. In addition, there is a definition specifically for open space. And it includes, open space may include but is not limited to lawns, decorative plantings, walkways, active and passive recreational areas, playgrounds, fountains, swimming pools, wooded areas, first-floor decks, unenclosed patios with solid or lattice roofs, watercourses, and surfaces covered by not more than five feet in depth of projections, which are at least eight feet above grade. So in short, the deck would be included in the open space.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And those are all my questions, thank you.
Mr. Yeager, second-story balconies are not open space.
Correct.
Vice Chair Zick, questions?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you guys being here. Appreciate your honest answers to the questions that you've been posed so far. I find it interesting, first of all, I like your design and I like your attitude about the project. I find it interesting to hear a question form that essentially says, "If we didn't have any rules, would you like to build your project without parking?" Your answer is kind of like, yes. "If we didn't have any rules, would you like to build more square footage in a higher-density project?" I think your answer was yes. And "if we didn't have rules, would you like to avoid paying the traffic impact fee?" I suspect your answer would be yes. And "if we didn't have rules, would you like to avoid paying the parkland fee?" I suspect your answer would be yes. And "if we didn't have any rules, would you like to cut into the open space and have that be more buildable square footage?" And I suspect the answer is yes. But I think the real question is, is this a quality development that people will want to buy? And I think it's a resounding yes, the way you've designed it. And thank you for that. No further questions.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. So, I may disagree with that a little bit. I, if you've looked at some, you know, small lot subdivisions and this kind of lot configuration throughout the city, it is not unusual for the house facing the street to be oriented differently. So the main access is in off the main street, not, in the main access, I mean driveways or garage access isn't off the side street, it's typically off the front street to create some presence. So I'm going to share my thoughts with you a little bit about unit A and the way it's oriented on the site and its design. This is going to be, I'm going to be totally honest with you. Right now, that north elevation facing Bernard looks like a side elevation masquerading as a front elevation. And I'll tell you why. It's, and if you look at the west elevation, that to me, when I first saw that, I go, oh, that must be the front elevation. And it's not. It's the alley-facing elevation. My concern with, and I'm approaching this from findings about our design standards and how they fit into the community, this unit A design doesn't work for me at all. Doesn't mean that the, the way it's oriented can't work. My preference would be, and I ask you if this works for you or not, that on the north elevation, you see that wall to the right, which is to the right of the entry. It's below the den windows. That's the north wall of the garage. Can the garage door be placed there? We're looking at a 21-foot by 20-foot, six-inch. So I'll ask you that question.
Sure.
Why didn't you think about putting it there?
The reason is not made by me. The reason, I totally agree with your point of view that these, the garage door and the front door should be facing the street. That's why we initially was starting the design from there, try to make that corner unit unique as well. But the problem that we're facing is, we do have an alleyway next to it. And by doing another driveway or another garage driveway approach next to it, it's just too crowded over there. And we got challenged by the public work that you cannot have another curb cut over there. So maybe Mr. Yeager can clarify that. We do have those comment earlier. That's why we have been limited to use the alley to be the only access way to all the unit in the back since we have it there already. So that's the main reason for that.
Okay, Mr. Yeager, can you help me out there? What's the, is there any, is there any space between potentially a driveway off of Bernard accessing the garage door and the alley?
So I'd have to defer that to Mr. Yang. The other thing we would need to consider is that at that point, you would have unbroken concrete from the property to the west of the alley. Pretty much, so then it would be alley, sidewalk, driveway. So that's probably about 100 feet of just unbroken concrete. So just another thing to consider there. But Mr. Yang, if you have the answer to the Chair's question.
Right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Yeager. So the actual orientation of the driveway is basically determined by our Transportation Services Division. Unfortunately, we don't have an individual from our staff to kind of explain that situation. But if I would hazard, I guess I think one of the basic concerns, given the locale of that, of that unit, is probably sight distance issues as cars coming along the corner, which probably would make it a little bit untenable to have a driveway at that location. And that was become my, my theory on that. However, I can confirm that by asking staff tomorrow in Transportation Services and follow up.
Okay.
Chair, it may also be that on-street parking is trying to be preserved there by not forcing a curb cut. The other thing that is kind of brought to mind, I think I might know where you're going with this is, especially with your side view, once you said that, it does resemble that to me as well. And maybe it would be something if the commission was interested is to create more of an entry feature in front of the door.
Well, that's my Plan B.
Sorry.
So we're kind of getting there. So I appreciate the answer. I get it. I think it's not ideal from a design perspective, from a functionality perspective, I understand that. So we'll move on.
I will say one thing too. We did consider possibly having a driveway that could curve into it, but that doesn't work because of the required backup. So if that was something that the Chair was thinking.
So I'll move on to some kind of design elements on that north elevation that I think needs some help from my perspective. One is the wall plane that is the, it's the north wall of the upstairs den. It's a pretty significant wall plane that is broken up by some really minimal window treatments. If you look on the west elevation above the garage, which is the west wall of the den, those two larger windows, and there's no window schedule on your plans that I saw, so I don't, I don't know how to dimension these. My preference would be if you're trying to save costs, that those two taller linear windows on the north elevation get moved to the west elevation and you move the two big windows on the west elevation to the north elevation to break up that wall plane. So there's a little more visual interest on the architecture where you just move those. In the west elevation, it's the two large windows above the garage, move those to the north elevation. Move the two smaller linear windows to the west elevation where they're not seen as much because they're on an alleyway.
Right, I mean, I do have an answer for you, Mr. Chair. The main reason we didn't move the bigger window to the north side, number one, this north side, you don't get much light from there, from the direct, that is more indirect light. Number two, we do have a, we do have a big tree over there eventually. That tree will be in front of those windows. So we try to minimize any impact to that so we can kind of focus on the other side to have more lights in there and also not looking to the tree or the tree will be kind of in front of those. The plain wall on the first floor and also part of like a second floor. Can we make those linear window a little bit bigger? Yes, that could be, that could be done by doing maybe another six inch or a foot wider to make it more proportionally correct.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, we didn't show any landscaping on our elevation because we try to show clear architectural intent for the building.
And the preliminary landscape plan doesn't inform me very much either, so... So let me ask you a question. What would, what, other than cost, and I understand cost, but again, this particular, this particular unit design for me right now is like... So, so you have a balcony on the north wall at the south end of the... What would you think about putting another balcony on the other side on the den, off the den? So you create some symmetry and also some...
You mean the den's on the west elevation?
So, yeah, so, no, you put a balcony on the north elevation but somewhere off the den, probably to the, at the northwest corner, for instance.
Well, the...
That's a cost issue, I understand.
No, it's not really a cost issue. It's more zoning co-issue because creating a balcony, there's a two balcony that we can do. One is a Julian balcony, meaning like it's only six inch up, like some sort of like a fake balcony, but you do create a much bigger opening for the sliding door or the French door opening inward. That would dramatically make that facade more user-friendly, I would say, for potential. We can do that too, but I think making the window bigger or using the same window on the west elevation to those two or even making it into one probably makes more sense because two balcony side by side, it's kind of competing each other. And in this scheme right here, we try to emphasize the master bedroom. And the den, den is used more for like a secondary living room. So once we take out too much wall space, that space getting very hard to use because you only have one wall for your TV or you don't have any wall for your sofa or couch for that one. So that kind of limitate the usage for the room. So I've, my suggestion will be making the two smaller window bigger might be more functional and more practical to the user in the future.
Okay.
If that will help you to justify the wall that's two plan on the second floor.
You could also do a more articulated facade where you push back one way farther than, so there's a roof and you could add a roof as well above it. That could give a lot of articulation relief between the floor levels if you're worried about a really heavy facade in the front there.
Okay, and what other kind of design concept to think about? The, if you look at the kind of progression of the lower part of the north elevation from south or east to west, you do have a breakup there because of the siding you're using on the eastern portion of the structure. And where you'll have this, it looks like it'd probably be a stucco treatment for the garage wall. Again, the imbalance, and I get what you're doing in the living room there is, to the left of the windows on the north elevation, looks like it's going to be your TV wall.
Exactly.
Well, I'm trying to, so I guess to add some more interest there, I'm thinking if you did a similar treatment to the west elevation above the garage doors, where that TV wall is going to be on the north, I don't know, you don't have to have all three windows. You can knock out maybe the middle taller window and put your TV wall where the, on the east side where the G, where the, on the floor plan, the scheduled G window is, make that your TV wall. What do you think about that?
Well, I think that will work too. Again, we'll try to make the room more flexibility for the future user so they don't have stick was one way to use the room. But, you know, if that will work for you, I think...
There's only one way to use the room now with the way you've presented it.
Yeah, we can definitely make that window bigger to make the upper wall facade not too big plain wall over there, over the garage.
Tell me a little about, about your landscaping plan. It's preliminary, I know, but conditions require you to submit a landscape plan. Do you anticipate that that landscape plan is going to be materially different from the one in the package here? Because you talked about a tree. I didn't see a tree in the preliminary plan, I saw a medium-sized shrubs.
Oh, if you look at the L 3.1 sheet, I'm not sure you have the same package I have here. That landscape plan does have two trees at the bernard side, and one is right in front of that den, the, in the garage.
Is that the, the blue bush, the blue bush, the acacia?
It's marked with acronym ACCO.
Yeah, that's, okay, so that's the acacia, it's a common names, the blue bush. Do you know what the height is of that, its maturity?
Not on top of my head right now, but when we try to, the, the concept that we had before is to have that tree at least grow up to the second floor high, or at least one and a half floor. So that will, the tree will be cover or blocking the window as a privacy in the future. So that, that was the intent for that tree over there. Same thing for the other one, so we can block out the visibility from the, the privacy for the master bedroom.
Okay.
If I may, the, the tree grows to approximately 20 feet in height and 15 feet in width.
Okay, that answers that question.
Great, thank you.
Are you planning to use any kind of uplighting in your landscape plan?
Right this moment, we don't have any proposed for uplighting. That's something we can work with the planning in the future, to see what's the lighting requirement for the area. So usually uplight wasn't that welcome, just because of, again, that's the privacy that's shining to the second floor bedroom, and all those kind of things that we need to work it out in the future. Downlighting from the, the landscape area, which, which you have the front, we have those projection between two feet, two foot, overhand, those are having a great opportunity for downlight, and that will wash the wall, and also to the landscape sidewalk area in the future. So that's why we're proposing, and having that design ten in mind right now.
Okay. All right, that'll do it for now for me. We'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anybody, anybody in chambers wish to speak to this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, anyone on, in the virtual world, Anna?
No, there's not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions of staff or the applicant? Vice Chair Zick?
I have another question for the applicant, actually.
Gentlemen, if you could come forward again, please, sorry.
So I noticed the plans are stamped by a professional engineer, and that is not you, correct?
The civil engineer? No, it's not me.
Could you step to the microphone so we could, could hear you?
I'm sorry. Yeah, the civil engineer is not me, it's the other person.
Okay. Are you a licensed architect?
I'm still in training for the last 10 years, I guess.
So you've been an architect for 10 years?
No, I've been, I've been this field for, shoot, 2001 to 22 years, 21 years, yeah.
That's impressive, thank you. No more questions.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Erath, do you have question, any more questions of staff or the applicant?
Thank you, Chair. In the spirit of Commissioner Toller's previous questions about parking requirements, which I thought were very thoughtful and forward-thinking, by the way, where did we shake out in terms of the timing of the projected changes associated with the assembly bills and where they'll be at that time? Would they, if they haven't broken ground in terms of demolition of the site, would they be subject to changing any of the parking requirements? Mr. Drapkin?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Erath. It depends on really the writings of the assembly bill. I, I would have to look into that to really say what it says when specifies for those gray areas, or those in-between areas. I will say, though, that we do have a housing element program for this zone that suggests to look into the parking requirements with specific emphasis on too much.
Okay.
So that, that program is, and that's a three-year program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drapkin. I, I will say, in, in the spirit of what you just said, and this is not to knock the plan at all, it's just to say that when you're looking at the aerial view down, there is a very large footprint for cars there, in terms of the total, the total square footage. So if there's any way to possibly drive that down, just by adhering to the minimum state requirements, I think that'd be great. Okay, thank you, Chair, that's all for me.
Okay, Commissioner Russell, do you have any questions or of staff or the applicant?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rojas?
No, sir.
Commissioner Vivar?
No, other than I do want to ask a question again on the access, so the, so Mr., Mr. Yeager, you were saying that the access was chosen not to be from the, was, was chosen to be solely from the alley, yes, to prevent any additional curb cuts and possible loss of on-street parking? That's for Unit A.
That, that would be a consequence of modifying the driveway location, yes.
Right.
Commissioner Vivar, I could elaborate a little bit. So basically, the driveways I was mentioning before is under the purview of the Transportation Services Division, so I can follow up with staff and find out the exact reason for that. But the thing is typically when those driveways are, are installed, the considerations is both site distance, because if it's so close to the...
Sure, of course.
To the curb return, I mean, that caused an issue with accidents and so forth, as cars are making the turn. And that's probably one of the reasons that precipitated the reason for not having that driveway at that particular location. But also, another concern, as mentioned before by Mr. Yeager, is probably, and also Mr. Drapkin, is about the lack of parking spaces that would also engender.
Right.
So we could follow up to, to get the exact reasons, and then we could share that with the commission.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to say, one thing I do like about this project is the fact that access is being taken from the alley. I think whenever possible, driveway access to any project, whether residential or commercial, should be taken from the lower volume street, and from an alley when the alley is adjacent to a, a property, in consideration of pedestrian and bicycle safety and that sort of thing. So I am glad that this project is doing that. So I would hope that other projects around the city as well would, would consider that idea of taking access from the lower volume street in the spirit of safety. Thank you.
Commissioner Rojas, you, you didn't have any, right? Commissioner Toller, anything? No. Vice Chair, anything? Okay, I'm going to have the applicant come up. I have one more question before I close the public hearing. Thank you. I'm going to go to page 45, again, this is the north elevation page. So if you look at first floor, Unit A, the floor plan, it shows, just to the right, it shows the, the, looks like the cover, but the front door is cheek-to-jaw with the garage door wall. You see that?
Mm-hmm.
And then, on the floor plan, on the north wall of the garage, it shows a small window. Is that correct?
Doors, wall, show a small window. It's talking about this window.
This is page 40.
Oh, right, right, right.
Now, the elevation just above it shows a small window just to the right of the front door, but that doesn't show on your floor plan.
Yeah.
Nor does the, yeah, nor does the window show on the wall of the garage. So what's going on there? I don't understand that.
That, that was my bad, that we wasn't coordinating well enough between elevation and the plan, since we changed this plan multiple times, they probably missed that one, that we can fix it, to coordinating the, the window location per the plan.
Okay, so which one is it? Which one is it going to be?
The elevation is more correct.
And so in that elevation, the window to the right of the door, is that part of the garage wall?
No, that, that front door should be moved to, to the east side, couple feet more to have that window in. Now I remember, we try to minimize the impact between the front door and the garage door to give it more circulation ease over there. So we shift that door south another three feet or three and a half feet to have the window there, and also have the better circulation, so we can put another auditing closet over there in the future, or something like that. Sorry for the confusions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? And I'm, sorry, I'm going to have, I forgot to do one housekeeping item, I'm sorry. I think, Architect, you can, you can stay seated. I, I forgot to ask you, sir, if you, one, had read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and if you agree with the conditions of approval.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. All right, you may have a seat. Okay, Commissioners, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Toller?
I don't have a motion, and I don't want to be the one to make it, but I want to say that I do agree with a lot of your comments and concerns regarding the elevation. We got one shot at this, and the last thing I would want to do is stall a project, but if it was the commission's desire to have them come back with some revisions, I would, I would be in support of that.
Okay, anybody have a motion to make?
I have a motion.
Commissioner Vivar?
I'd like to make the motion to approve planning application PA 22 dash... What was it? 22-18, I believe it was?
Planning application 22-20.
22-20, for the subdivision proposal. As it stands, I am, however, open to any colleagues wanting to make additional conditions and discussing that. Thank you.
So Commissioner Vivar, I have to have you state the motion as approval of planning application 22-20 intended to parcel map 22, 2022-140.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Is there a second of the motion? Home panel? Vice Chair? Okay, Vice Chair's seconding. So maker of the motion, I'm going to ask if you will consider some additions, and these would be part of the conditions of approval. So the addition of the, the addition of window treatments on the north elevation of the den to the same-sized windows as the west elevation above the garage. So the two smaller windows would be replaced with the two larger windows.
And the reasoning for that? Sir?
To create, to break up the wall plane of that north elevation.
Does the second of the motion agree?
Well, I'm the chair, so I'll ask him that. Well, we, we need to get you to agree first.
I, I do agree, but, yeah.
Does the second concur?
Yeah, at this point.
Okay. So just basically duplication of the window treatments above the garage on the west elevation to the north elevation at the, at the den.
Yes, understood, and I do agree with that addition of the condition.
So I'm also going to ask for a condition to add the larger window similar to the west elevation above the garage to the north-west, I mean northeast corner of the lower floor on the north elevation, and the removal of the window treatment identified as item G on the first unit floor plan on page 45. So we're just moving that window over to the, the north side versus the east side, and that'll leave the sliders in place.
I, I would be open to that. I do, if I may, Chair, ask staff if that would be okay in terms of the site distance for privacy, all of these window condition modifications? Would the site distance in terms of privacy still be okay, lines of sight and whatnot?
Since the windows are facing north toward the street, it would have no impact on privacy impacts.
Okay, so I do, I do accept the addition of that condition.
Right. I think if, if, and if this a second concurs, I can, I can vote to approve this project based on the fact that I think that creates the, the visual interest on the street that I think this, this project needs, particularly from that unit, and creates some sense that that is indeed the front yard elevation of this house, and not, not a side yard elevation facing, facing the street front, and so, Vice Chair, I don't know if you agree with that or not.
This window to there?
Correct.
I concur.
Okay. So staff, do you follow those changes architecturally, in that we need to have that, those changes be made to, as a condition? With that, any other comments on the motions? Vice Chair?
Yeah, does...
Commissioner Vivar, do you want to comment on the motion thing?
Sir, I want to thank staff and the applicant for going back and forth with us on this application. I frankly didn't think we'd be sitting here that long discussing windows and driveways, but, you know, I, I think the project is good overall. I think, you know, we shouldn't let, you know, perfect get in the way of, you know, of good, perfect is the name of good, as the, as the saying goes. And, you know, if this is going to increase our housing stock in, in the coast, in the city of Costa Mesa, and that particular neighborhood where this, this is being proposed, I think that's a good thing. And I, I'm sure that the applicant as well is going to be open to the city's recommendations with any other lighting or, or other concerns that the, the city may have as the application progresses. But I am supporting of this motion because of the housing stock increase, and I generally think this is a good project, as I said earlier. I like the alley access, I think it's, it's a good thing that that is being used. I think it's a good thing that that is being used, as I said, in terms of transportation safety and minimizing those conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians and cyclists. So I do appreciate that access being taken from the alley, and I generally think the project is fine.
Okay, Vice Chair, any comments?
So I'll support the motion. I think you've designed a nice project that will be attractive to the neighborhood, attractive in the market, and the people that buy the home will enjoy the design features that you've given a great deal of thought to.
Commissioner Russell, do you have any comments on the motion?
I just, I thought it was a good project, and I think the tweaks that we've made have made it a better project, and adding housing stock in Costa Mesa is always going to be a good thing, so I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Erath?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to commend the Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioner Vivar on spearheading these additional conditions of approval. I think they're very thoughtful, and they do enhance the quality of this project, which was already a quality project to begin with, just so you know. Okay. I will be supporting this motion, and I think that's all for me. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Rojas, any comments?
No, no, they're going to say, I think it is a well-thought-out and well-designed project as well, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I got to bring up our parking requirements. I looked it up today. Everybody know WalkScore.com? It's been around for a while. It's real easy. I think it's WalkScore.com. You could type in your address, and it'll show you all the amenities, bus stops, parks, schools, places you could get things, places you'd want to go that are useful within walking distance. They also have transit score and bike score, so 86 walk score, that is very walkable, unlike Mr. Yeager was saying. This is downtown Costa Mesa. Bike score, 72. There are a lot of bus stops, but the frequency just doesn't cut it. 43. Two, I understand, you want to sell these single-family homes, you got to have a two-car garage, I get it. There's realities there. But 15 onsite parking spaces for four units, I think we all need to come to grips with how we're perpetuating the parking problem. We can't solve this by adding more cars and making driving more convenient and cementing in auto dependency in our city, in our downtown. It hurts affordability, it hurts the viability of this project. I think if it didn't have that weird alley there, it would be unbuildable with that two-story limit, because the only way on a shotgun lot you could get all those spaces, you would have to bump it up another floor to have a, you know, rentable or sellable unit size. So it's our, it's just because of that alley that this is even buildable. Our parking requirements, as far as I'm understanding, preclude redevelopment of that, and think of all the other lots in the city that are like that. And I think we need, well, this might be a future task, but best practices for these sorts of lots. We have a lot of lots like this that are deep and skinny, and we have a lot of lots that are deep and wide, and you have, I think it's good that we're paying attention to the way that those developments interact with the street and engage with the street, like Mr. Chair was talking about, I think that's good. But also, there's three units in the back that, they have no street frontage, they have no face. It's like there's, they walk into, there's no face to the house. Do you guys know what I mean? It's just like being in the back half of a donkey suit. There's no, I think we need to figure out what, how we can do those lots best and codify them or put them in our design guidelines. And then, if you could bring up the elevation one more time, Mr. Yeager, and these, let me also, if anybody wants to go to page 23 for the conditions of approval, this is number seven. No modifications of the approved building elevations shall be made during constructions without prior planning division written approval. Elevation shall not be modified unless otherwise approved by Development Services Director as consistent with the architectural design and features of the proposed development. So I don't want to put any of what I'm about to say into the conditions, but I think there's room for improvements through plan check and final sign-off, and so I just have a couple I agree with Chair Dirical with that. You got the side of the garage there, and two relatively small windows, and that's something, I think you've done a good job at, yeah, orienting the front door off the I think the porch needs to be deeper. I think a six-foot porch would be a usable porch, and I think a four-foot porch is a fake porch. It's a cartoon of a porch. You need to be able to put a chair out there and someone to be able to walk by you to pass out the lemonade or something, right? And since we've learned that it counts towards open space, as it should, I think that would be good. And I think railings on the porch to define it as a porch would make it read as a house a little more. There's really two kind of compositions. If you look at A, north elevation, there's the thing happening on the left and the thing happening on the right, and what defines the thing on the left is, one, it's not the garage, but you have that open gable. And I think that needs to be its own composition, distinct from the side of the garage, right? So you have two compositions there, and that one on the left, I think it needs a little balance and symmetry. The vertical alignment of windows would help. If you have a kid, draw a house. We all know what a house should look like. The windows line up, the openings line up with each other. I think this would look better if that left piece would read as a house with vertical alignment, and that right piece would be distinguished, differentiated in some way, maybe rather than top and bottom differentiation, left and right differentiation, just for that left piece to just read, oh, that's a house. It looks like a house, it feels like a house, it reads like a house. Doesn't have to be symmetrical, but I think it needs a lot more balance, at least, right? And even that, where that balcony is, and you have a disruption, right, you have the stucco around that opening, I think that works against what I'm talking about. I agree with Mr. Chair, the big windows on front, I don't think the big windows need to be sucking in all the direct sunlight, I don't think that's necessarily a good thing, that fades your hardwood floors, right? Big windows themselves will bring plenty of light in. But, anyway, those are what, those don't need to be in the conditions, maybe they could be in the minutes, and I hope that you guys might take some of those considerations in mind and make the adjustments accordingly. But I think you had a really, a really challenging lot to figure out how to develop, and you've done it, you've done a good job, and I hope that we can figure out our parking requirement stuff and incorporate some of the comments tonight into our design guidelines, so. And I am in support of the motion.
Okay. I have no additional comments, so Anna, if you'll please call the roll vote.
Do you mind putting in the motions on the?
Yeah, so we could have Commissioner Vivar.
You mean the button?
Motion button, yeah. There we go.
There's it.
Thank you. Okay, we need to do a roll call vote because Commissioner, our voice vote because Commissioner Russell's.
Chair Dirical?
Aye.
Vice Chair Zick?
Aye.
Commissioner Rojas?
Aye.
Commissioner Toller?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Erath?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Staff, quick question, or Mr. Preziosi, because there's a map associated with this, I noticed in the staff report, it said the final review authority for the project is the Planning Commission. Is that true with the map as well? Does the map go to the council? Okay?
You know?
Excuse me, Mr.?
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'm asking for an answer for myself or from staff?
I think staff just already answered it. They said we're clear, we don't, this will be final in seven days unless appealed to the City Council. Okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, guys. Okay, we have no additional public hearings tonight, so that will bring us, and we have no, I don't think we have, get my agenda in front of me. So we have no old business nor any new business tonight, so that brings us to department reports. Public Works, Mr. Yang?
No reports from Public Works, other than to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir, you too. Development Services, any reports tonight, boys?
Nothing tonight, Chair.
Okay. City Attorney, Mr. Preziosi?
No report, Chair Dirical.
All right, we will stand in adjournment to our regularly scheduled meeting of November 28th, 2022. Everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Good night.